Good evening. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem, and I call to order this May 1st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join the city council with me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant in Arms tonight is Lieutenant Patrick McCallen. Thank you. Glad to have you with us, Lieutenant. Sorry I butchered your name. We have three honorariums tonight, but before we do, I'm going to, we are honored tonight to have with us State Treasurer Adele Falwell, who has just completed a major review of the state's financial situation. He wanted to make a comment about Winston-Salem, so I'm going to recognize State Treasurer Adele Falwell. Glad to have you with us, Mr. Falwell.
Thank you, Mayor Joins and member of the council. It's great to be back with you. Just two very quick things. Over the last few weeks, the state of North Carolina has gone through its review with the three major rating agencies that the city of Winston-Salem has to go through from time to time. And in every one of these meetings, I'm asked, who really did do a good job of looking into the future decades ago regarding unfunded healthcare liabilities? And it was not the state of North Carolina. The only person that gets the A-plus rating for looking into the future 37 years ago is the city of Winston-Salem. We just finally got the county of Wake to start putting something toward their unfunded liability, which is $500 million for one county. So I came just to applaud all of you, both this board and previous boards, for the decisions they've made. Your unfunded healthcare liability, as you know, is $72 million, but you have $65 million in the bank. And even Charlotte doesn't even come close to matching you. And I came to report something to you that you already know, because you should really use this in your economic development, as an economic development tool. No business wants to expand or relocate into a community where they're feeling someone else's liabilities. So I applaud all of you for making those tough decisions and having the discipline and to start out like you're going to hold out regarding the unfunded liabilities. And lastly, as I depart, I just want to thank you for preserving this building. I've been coming into this building for 37 years, and I go into a lot of buildings like this. And the work that you've done to preserve this city hall, I think, is a tribute to Winston-Salem. So congratulations for being physically responsible, and congratulations for being historically responsible. And thank you for having me, Mayor, and members of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Treasurer. Come back anytime.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Falwell is a proud resident of the West Ward.
Oh, is she? Okay.
She's one of my people.
Item H1, please.
Item H1, resolution honoring the 2023 Wake Forest University National Champion Debate Team. Whereas the Wake Forest University Debate Team won the American Debate Association National Championship in March 2023, and whereas debate team members Anna Bitner, an English major from Lafayette, California, and Ari Davidson, a women's gender and sexuality studies major from Los Angeles, California, defeated the University of Kentucky to become national champions at the American Debate Association Tournament. And whereas the Wake Forest University Debate Team won the National Debate Tournament in April of 2023, and whereas debate team members Tajah Robinson, a communication major from New York, New York, and Ayana Trotman, an African-American Studies and Secondary Education major from Newark, New Jersey, defeated the University of Michigan to become national champions at the National Debate Tournament. And whereas Wake Forest Junior Ayana Trotman was the youngest Black student to ever win the National Debate Tournament. Whereas the Wake Forest University Debate Team had members who were co-champions of the Cross Examination Debate Association National Championship in April of 2023, and whereas debate team members Anna Bitner and Ari Davidson comprised one co-champion team, and Tajah Robinson and Ayana Trotman comprised the other co-championship team. And whereas the team, led by Dr. Jared Atchinson, the John Kevin Medica Director of Debate, head coach Justin Green, and associate head coach Dr. Amber Kelsey, won an unprecedented three national debate championships in 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize the Wake Forest University Debate Team for these three national honors and applaud both the students and coaches for their historic wins during the 2022-2023 season.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye. That is unanimous. We're honored to have Coach Justin Green and as well as the members of the debate team here, and Mayor Protem Adams is going to present the resolution.
Well, well. First of all, Winston-Salem could not be proud of you. I know Wake Forest University is, but to bring home this honor, something that's never been done, that's what I read, is that not true? And I saw the trophies, all three of them. I reckoned them, but they were better than the PGA or the USGA or any of that. Your trophies were that big, and I'm amazed that you were able, even able to hold them. But because you're young, I hope you'll continue to always embrace your skill set. Because in the real world that we live in, you're going to need those skill sets. And I need you to remember the instructors, the mentors, teachers, coaches, that poured into you for you to become who you are now and what you will become later. I myself was a speech communications major. I myself did argument debate a lot, a lot of classes. And I know that it prepared me for what I do now in my life. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and I hope that you'll continue the trend that you set for Wake Forest University.
You'd like to say something? Go right ahead. Thank you so much.
I'll keep it brief. The debaters know I don't always do that. But I just want to say thank you for the city for supporting us. Our debate team does a number of ventures beyond just competitions, and to have wide support in the school systems, wide support when we show up to public events, means a lot. We can learn a lot behind some classroom walls, but when we have an opportunity to go beyond those walls, it really makes things better. So thank you all for your support, and I know our four debaters here, who represent many others at home, are certainly appreciative as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Coach. Always good to see Coach Green, as well as members of his team who helped facilitate the Earth Day debates among our high schoolers. So thank you, Coach.
And for the record, they're in the Northwest Ward. Those are my people.
All right, touche. Item H2.
Item H2, resolution recognizing City Clerks Week 2023. Whereas city clerks are a vital part of local government throughout the world, and whereas the city clerk is the oldest office among public servants, and whereas the city clerk's office provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing body, and agencies of other government levels, and whereas the city clerk's office pledges to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the city clerk's office serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the city clerk's office continually serves to improve the administration of the affairs of the city clerk's office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings for their state, county, and professional organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize the week of April 30th through May 6, 2023, City Clerks Week, and extend appreciation to the city clerk's office for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the mayor and city council and the citizens of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, and Councilmember Cipio is going to present this to our city clerk.
On behalf of the council and the city of Winston-Salem, we say we are so proud of you three. You guys do a magnificent job. I know for some it's new, but we're going to continue to be excellent, and we cherish the work that you do. Thank you for being so wonderful, taking care of our city in such a marvelous way.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council, thank you all so much. As Councilmember Cipio said, we are relatively new here. Ms. Banner and myself within the past two months. So I would like to make a special acknowledgement to Jackie, her hard work during the transition in the past few months. We're excited to provide, continue to provide excellent service to you all and the city of Winston-Salem. So thank you all.
Thank you. I'll let you get set down, and I'll have item H3.
Item H3, resolution recognizing May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Whereas the city of Winston-Salem joins cities and counties across the United States in a nationwide celebration of Historic Preservation Month, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for all communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for all neighborhoods and citizens all over the city of Winston-Salem. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Historic Preservation Month is cosponsored by the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission and other local preservation and neighborhood organizations throughout Forsyth County. And whereas these organizations encourage members of the community to participate in creative and fun events related to historic preservation as a way to celebrate Preservation Month 2023. And now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and Winston-Salem City Council do hereby declare the month of May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Winston-Salem to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city of Winston-Salem and that a copy be furnished to the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We're glad to have with us today Jackie Berry, who is the chairman of the commission, and she's going to receive that and give us a quick update about the work of the commission. So, Ms. Berry?
City council, we have to present this resolution recognizing the hard work that you and your commission do every day for us and for the work that you do to make sure Winston-Salem retains its wonderful heritage.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this recognition. And I do want to take just, and I promise you I'll be brief, just a few moments to present to you the Historic Resources Commission's annual report for 2022. You should have a copy of it at your seat. I'm not going to go through everything. I just want to point out a couple of things of interest to you. On the back, you will see our statistics for the year. You know, you talk to some people, and we sound like we're terribly hard to get along with, and we never approve anything. But you can see from our stats that we had a total of 118 certificates of appropriateness applications, and of those 118, we only denied three. So we don't turn down everything. I'd also like to point out that in the fall, Preservation North Carolina had their annual conference here, and the city of Winston-Salem shined. We really did look good. They were very pleased with everything they saw in the city. Mayor, I believe you received an award for, on behalf of the city.
On behalf of the city.
We took over the award ceremony. Two of our projects received awards, and Michelle McCullough, our staff member, received the highest award in the state. So it was much deserved. We're very proud of her. And a lot of people think that all we do is the certificates of appropriateness, and we are a lot more than COAs. We have committees that plan things. Our Historic Marker Program is thriving. We get all kinds of applications. This past year, we did approve four. And we are going to be having a marker unveiling of the Boston cottages on Saturday, May 20th at 3:00, and you will be receiving an invitation to that and hope that you can come. Also, our Education Committee in recognition of Preservation Month is planning a trivia night at Joymongers Barrel Hall. And so we invite you to come May 22nd, 7:30, to Joymongers, and you can impress everyone with what you know about the history of Forsyth County and the city of Winston-Salem. And also, we are very pleased that this year, actually, we did it last year, we formed a DEI committee that is now taking place, and they are in the planning stages right now. They're getting organized, they're doing research, and we're excited to have them working with us. And one last thing, I just want to mention that this is our 75th anniversary year, and we are going to receive a state marker in the fall because we were the first historic commission in the state of North Carolina. So we planned some activities to celebrate our 75th in the fall. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Ms. Berry?
Well, I thank the council for all that you do to support the committee. I thank those of you that come to our meetings, that come to our marker unveilings. We do appreciate all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the hard work. Tonight's agenda, the city council's comprised of, one, voluntary annexation. There are nine zoning cases, UDO text amendment, and a city appointments or reappointments. Several of these items are listed as public hearings, and when the public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider the item. If there is opposition to the zoning items, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak on these items, obviously I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider the zoning items. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online in the city's website. Just click on the watch city meetings online option. So may we, councilmembers, without objection, may we go to item Z8 first? It's been requested for that one to be withdrawn, so without objection, we'll take item Z8.
Item Z8, public hearing on zoning petition of CHM Realty LLC from RS9 to RM18S, property located on the south side of Louis Lane across from Bell Avenue and Alma Drive, containing approximately 17.8 acres located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends denial of petition.
Recognize Councilmember Burke for a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the withdrawal of the zoning petition of item Z8.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, and those opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Councilmember Burke. Now go to item Z1.
Item Z1, public hearing on a petition for the voluntary annexation of approximately 4.97 acres located off of Old Walker Town Road. The project is known as Mill Creek Crossing and located in the northeast ward, recommended by the Public Works Committee.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard on this proposed annexation, voluntary annexation of this property? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and this is in the northeast ward. I recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you again. I move for approval of item Z1.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z2.
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of WR Hutchings Construction LLC from city of Winston-Salem RS9 and Forsyth County RS9 to city of Winston-Salem RM8S. Property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Old Walker Town Road and Dippin Road. Located in northeast ward, and Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in this council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and again, I recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3567.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z3.
Item Z3, public hearing on zoning petition of Agnes G. Fischel from RS9 to RM8S, located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway between Sina Avenue and Castleton Road Street, containing approximately 18.88 acres located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Should we call this item, was held over from our last meeting, and Councilmember Taylor has been doing some work on it. Mr. Murphy, do you have some information on the potential changes that you want to cover, and then we'll continue with the public hearing?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is, again, this was continued from your April meeting. I'm not going to go back over the public hearing presentation I gave before, but of course, this is the subject property highlighted in yellow. Same property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial photography. You can see there between Edgefield and Casteven, the piece of property there on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway. Again, this was continued from your April 30, April 3rd, 2023 city council meeting. In order for Councilmember Taylor to meet with neighboring property representatives, there was a meeting that was held on Thursday, April 13th, 2023. At that time, there were several, there was some discussion between Councilmember Taylor and the neighbors, and there were several things that were discussed, one of which was the potential to have a leftover onto, off of Peters Creek Parkway onto the new proposed public street entering the property. There was a request or a concern that was voiced about the creek area and how that was not shown to be fully open space. There was concern about the transition between these townhome units and the properties to the north along the new proposed road where it transitions to Edgefield. And then there was, there were some concerns that were voiced related to how this intersection would be treated in order to hopefully reduce potential cut-through traffic and make that, make that connection more palatable to the neighbors. So following that meeting, we did, staff did reach out, both planning staff and Winston-Salem DOT staff did reach out to the developer and to NC DOT. With the NC DOT, the request to do a leftover on Peters Creek Parkway, NC DOT indicated that because it was so close to the existing intersection at Stafford, Stafford Village Boulevard and the existing leftover that is already in this vicinity, there wasn't another way to put that leftover in. So NC DOT indicated that was not possible. We did discuss with the developer, and they did revise their site plan to show all of the area along the creek as open space area. They did come back and provide a stop condition for the north-south traffic at the intersection of the new road to try to reduce speed and make sure that there were some stop movements through there. And then additionally, they did relocate two of these units elsewhere on the site. They did not have a reduction of units, but they did relocate these units in order to beef up this vegetative buffer and provide a fence along this entire edge except for, I believe there was already a fence that was proposed in this area, and they're going to put that fence also along this edge at the transition on the northern side of the proposed road at Edgefield. In summary, the request is consistent with the recommendation, recommended density of the South Suburban Area Plan, and the project does support the legacy 2030 goals to provide additional housing choices and opportunities along a growth corridor. It does provide for infill development with excellent transportation access. And again, the estimated trip generation is comparable to what single-family development would produce on-site under the existing RS9 zoning. Again, this was heard at Planning Board in March. There was opposition, just as there was opposition at your council meeting on April 3rd, and it was continued. And of course, at that point, the Planning Board did recommend approval, and with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Murphy at this time? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So we'll hold, the public hearing was held open, so we do have individuals who signed up to speak tonight. We'll hear for those, and then I'll recognize Councilmember Taylor for comments. For the proponents, Douglas Collins, if you would, state your name and address for the record again, please.
Douglas Collins from 2836 Cronatzer Road in Advance, speaking for the family that owns the land. And once again, we just reiterate that we're not able to keep the land. The land needs to sell. Once again, we don't have a whole lot of money left to pay taxes and other stuff. I feel like we've been good neighbors over the years, maybe too good sometimes. There hasn't been nobody on the land in a long time. It's just been set in vacant. You know, having to go over there and deal with problems on and off, you know, we just can't hang on to the land. We've heard a lot of, you know, complaints about the traffic it's going to create. I'm sure it's going to be traffic, it's going to be traffic with anything that goes in there. You know, it's going to generate some sort of traffic, no matter what you do. You know, talking about rising crime with that going in there. You know, it's 2023. If you're not already locking your doors, you don't have your car locked up at night, you're already behind the times. So, you know, dust, you know, dust and dirt being generated from the site, you know, I can't help you with that. I mean, you may have to blow off your deck when you blow off your driveway when you mow the yard. I can't, can't do anything about that. But the fact of it is, is we can't But the fact of it is, is we can't run a nature preserve on our dime. That's what it comes down to. The land's been up for sale for 15 to 20 years. We've been through these problems before. These neighbor, the plans that we've drew up by developers that have come to these meetings and had meetings have all been shot down because it's always complaints. It's always, we don't want this. Well, I can't, I can't hang on to it and provide 20, 19 acres of land so that you can look out your kitchen window and look at deer. I can't do that. If I had the money, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sell it, but it's not just up to me. There's a lot of people involved, and it's, it's not my say-so. So, at the end of the day, it has to be done. If the city wanted it, they could have built a park on it for all I care. It wouldn't matter to me. It's been for sale for a long time. So, anybody who wanted to buy it and do something with it had plenty of time to do so. But at this time, it's just not up for us to hang on to it, and we're the ones that have to deal with the, the estate's office and the paperwork that they want closed out because of the two estates that's being held open, and they're on us every year, and it's tooth and nail. They want copies of agreements where we have realtors working on it. They want copies of this. We've provided all that. We've done our annual reports, but it gets more difficult every year dealing with them. I don't know if anybody's dealt with them, but it's a treat. But we've done everything we've been asked of. We've paid our taxes. There's nothing due on it or anything. But at the end of the day, I mean, we, we just have to do something with it, and we're just asking for approval. I know it's a different zoning, you know, but the plans have been submitted. I think, you know, people have looked at it. I know there's been accommodations made, you know, to accommodate people, you know, that have had concerns and complaints, you know, and I hope those have been addressed. But we just, you know, I don't know, it's a big step, you know, looking at the trip generation and stuff, that the houses versus these townhomes. I mean, the simple math to me. I mean, but I'm, listen, I'm no, no DOT engineer, so I can't tell you all about traffic. A lot of people smarter than me studied these plans and come up with the way this stuff was supposed to be connected, and these people were supposed to get in and out of their homes during the day. I don't claim to be one of those people. Somebody worked on it a lot smarter than me, and they've come up with these plans. So, at the end of the day, that, this is what we need to happen, and it's up to you. We're just asking for approval on this so that we can move forward with the sale of the land, and we can get those estates closed, and everybody can move down the road. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Visel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's members of the city council, Marty Visel, Bassecks and Kennedy Engineers, 6310 Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. Really don't want to reiterate anything that Mr. Murphy has already said. We were very pleased with the comments that came out of the meetings that was facilitated by Councilman Taylor. We really appreciate the feedback, and we're able to accommodate all of those items, and those are represented in the site plan that is in your packets tonight, but with that, we're here.
Visel, would you, for the record, please, on behalf of the petitioner, agree to all those conditions?
Yes, sir. We agree on behalf of the petitioner to all the conditions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Visel?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Edward Jones. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, we'll now turn to the opposition. First person signed up is Listra Yale. Excuse me if I mispronounce your first name.
That's fine. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Listra. I'm the daughter of Dan and Nancy Nifong at 5057 Edgefield Drive. We understand the need for more housing and that the owner wants to sell the land. It's currently, the, currently the land is zoned for a single-family residential for 91 homes. Rezoning is requested to allow 135 townhomes. Modifications have been made for more privacy to the established neighborhoods, and that is greatly appreciated. However, the major issue that has not been satisfactorily remediated is the substantial traffic influx into the Pinedale neighborhood that will affect not only the residents of Pinedale, but also the two churches that border the neighborhood. The two churches, Pinedale Church and Grace Baptist Church, have both voiced concerns and opposition for the dangerous traffic increase that will cause members of their congregation to actually be put in danger, especially children, when crossing the neighborhood streets to the church's parking lots. A majority of the south traffic for the new development will come down Ocala Drive and Edgefield Drive, and the north traffic will go up Sina Avenue, Edgefield Drive, and Ocala Drive. That will substantially impact the quality of life in the entire Pinedale neighborhood. The two churches will be substantially impacted as well. Pinedale Church has a parking lot across the street on Sina Avenue from the church where kids routinely cross, and Grace Baptist Church has an entrance from the neighborhood on Ocala Drive into their parking lot as well. The increased traffic will create a hazardous situation. Therefore, we are requesting that Edgefield Drive not be extended into the townhome development. The cost to extend Edgefield Drive from the Pinedale neighborhood would be substantially more than simply creating a north and south entrance and exit into and out of the townhome development onto Peters Creek Parkway. To extend Edgefield Drive, there will have to be substantial tree removal, grading, road prep, and paving, et cetera. In contrast, there is ample space on Peters Creek Parkway for the north and south entrance and exit into and out of the townhome development with significantly less time and cost, as there is only a grassy median between the north and south lanes of Peters Creek Parkway. If Edgefield Drive is not extended, the Pinedale neighborhood and residents and the two church congregations will basically be unaffected by the new development, and all of our concerns regarding increased traffic on Ocala Drive, Edgefield Drive, and Sina Avenue, and the dangers to church members, and especially the children, crossing the neighborhood roads to the parking lots, would no longer be an issue. We strongly urge you to consider this option, and thank you very much for your time and willingness to consider this matter that will impact so many.
Thank you very much. The other, next speaker is, I think it's Cynthia, I'm sorry, I can't make out the last name. Is it Southers? Excuse me, I couldn't quite make it out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Basically, pretty much what Lister did said, our major concern...
Would you please state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am?
Cynthia Smith.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Cynthia Smith, 5070 Edgefield Drive.
Thank you.
Her concerns as far as what we've gone through with our community are valid. I understand as far as the DOT for the turn-in, that it's too close. Sides Avenue and Ocala are like right on top of one another. So then, I don't understand why the other one to go for, what is it, northbound, southbound, to get in for that left turn lane coming in, going southbound on Peters Creek is impossible to do. Seems like there's a lot of, plenty of space to do it there, but that's all we asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anyone else for the opposition? All right, would the proponents like three minutes for rebuttal?
Yes, just looking at the DOT, I think Planning Director Murphy mentioned it, said it best, that the leftover from Peters Creek has not been accepted by NC DOT, and so without their permission, we would not be able to install a leftover. And as far as the extension of Edgefield, the right-of-way is actually there, existing, and per the, the city's UDO, we would be required to make that extension and connect the Edgefield, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the proponents for rebuttal? Yes, sir.
If I could, just speak another minute.
Yes, sir.
Douglas Collins. The last time I spoke to Pinedale Church myself, they called me, and we're talking about safety of the church members and the children. They had me go in there with the police department, which is on record with the Winston-Salem Police Department, had to go in there and evict the homeless people that had made a home underneath a carport last fall that were in the church parking lot harassing the women and the children trying to go into church. So, I'm the person that had to evict those people off the land with the Winston-Salem Police Department for the women and children to be able to go to church. That's what's in there now. If we don't go through with this, that's the problem with the church. I just wanted to tell you all, that's exactly what's going on there.
Thank you, sir. All right, for the opponents, you would have three minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like to make any comments.
Hello, Mayor Joyce and councilmembers. My name is Heather Glasscock. I am a resident at 5020 Perry Co. Lane and also own 5011 Perry Co. Lane, which my parents are about to move into. Perry Co. is the parallel street to Edgefield on the west side. I understand the left turn being outside of the scope of something the city can handle. We would ask that it would be a priority that traffic calming measures in our neighborhood be a priority, that we would have stop signs and speed bumps or whatever the neighborhood would agree on. I understand that Winston-Salem is a desirable place to live. I've lived here for almost 25 years, and I love it, and I love my neighborhood, and I love how quiet and calm it is. We have children riding their bikes and a lot of elderly people walking their dogs, which I understand you all can sympathize with, but I also understand the dilemma of the land needing to be sold, but we ask that it would be a priority that our safety be assured through some traffic calming measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will close the public hearing, and we've already heard the report of the, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry Mathis, I'm representing Pinedale Christian Church. I'm the elder and chairman of the board, so...
Yes, sir.
Name is thrown up a lot. Our concern, you know, I certainly am in favor of them selling the land and putting the homes in there. I am concerned about the traffic. If you'll take a look, and I'm sure city council has looked and zoning has looked, those roads are not suitable for the type of traffic we're talking about adding to that. And there is an issue with safety, and I know that DOT will dictate on the turn, the southbound left-hand turn-in, and also coming out the left-hand turn to go south on Peters Creek. But if we sit there and you sit there and look, and they talk about the, the one opening that has the left-hand turn, if that one was eliminated, the left-hand turn, there would no longer be an issue there, and you could also pull people out of that neighborhood and stuff and not put them on, on Sina or Ocala or any of those roads, because if you go in there, they're basically one-lane roads. And it's just, just because of development, it was just a small development when it started, and the roads just did not have the infrastructure to be able to handle the extra flow of traffic. That's the concern from Pinedale, and obviously, I'd love to see the homes there, because there is a concern with the homeless population and stuff, and we did have an issue, and Mr. Collins did come and resolve that, because we were told we couldn't do anything about it because it wasn't our property. But the, just the traffic flow is a concern for us, and it's not for any other reason is, we do have kids that are crossing back and forth, a lot of traffic in, and as I said, if you go and walk those streets, they're basically one-lane roads, because it's just, they weren't engineered to be carrying that much traffic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll close the public hearing now, and we'd recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem to the esteemed members of this council and to the Winston-Salem community. I'm going to say a couple of comments, Mayor, if it's okay, then I'm going to make a motion. First of all, I want to say to the neighbors, thank you for being here, thank you for speaking out. I appreciate you meeting with me and us working together to try to solve your concerns. I've already spoken to the development team. Thank you for wanting to bring your business to the city. Since church has been mentioned several times, I will say that when I was first elected to this position many moons ago, before all the gray, I prayed to God for the serenity to accept the things that I cannot change, the courage to change the things that I can, and the wisdom to know the difference between the two. Fact of the matter is, there are a few things in this case that we can change, and you've heard from our planning director, Mr. Murphy. We talked about those changes, and I'll briefly mention them, but there are some things, no matter how we feel about this, we just simply cannot change. We can't change the fact that we have a property owner, who, for whatever reason, which is their personal business, they want to sell this property, and it's their God-given right to do so, as I've said before. We, no matter what we do, we have a person or a group who wishes to buy this property and develop it. No matter what we do, regardless of how we feel, the developer can go out today and build 100 single-family homes on the property. We've heard from our staff, we've, we've read the national studies. They tell us that single-family homes tend to generate more traffic than townhomes, and I think in this particular case, there's only room for a couple of cars per each townhome. We also can't change the fact that, as you heard several times, that the North Carolina Department of Transportation will not allow a turn into the facility from the other side of Peters Creek Parkway. The last thing that we can't change, no matter what we do today, Edgefield Drive will have to be extended by state law. If we could change those things, we could, but we just simply cannot, and we have to deal with it. Now, to the things that we can change, as you've heard from the planning director, we will be, we've listed the undisturbed streams and buffers on the planning particular site. Stop signs have been added at the intersection of Edgefield and Fox Allen Lane. And Ms. Glasscock, I've heard you loud and clear, that is a traffic calming measure that we've put in place. It wasn't there before, and I am willing and able to work with the neighbors to put in additional traffic calming measures as they arise. You have my word, and when I give it, you can, you can, you can take that to the bank. Also, the OPEC fence, it's going to be added all the way around the property, and as you saw, the neighbors were concerned about some of the congestion in the front of the neighborhood. We moved some of those units to the back to be as accommodating as possible. At this point, I don't know what else we can do. We've, we've bent over backwards to be accommodating to the neighbors. I appreciate you participating in the process, and hopefully, we'll continue to be able to work together going forward to address the traffic concerns that you have and the church has, and I promise to do that. With that being said, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3566.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the item, please indicate by voting yes, and anyone opposed, And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Item Z4.
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of Stradford 285 LLC from HB to PB. Properties located at the southeast intersection of South Stradford Road and Oakwood Drive. Located in the southwest ward, Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and I'll recognize Councilmember Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3570.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item Z5.
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of East Best LLC from GI and LI to LI. Property is located at the southwest intersection of Starlight Drive and Middleton Street, containing approximately 2.74 acres located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Another petitioner is here, if there are any questions. All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Taylor.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3571.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Z6.
Item Z6, public hearing on zoning petition of Prime Property LLC from HBS Two Phase to HBS Two Phase. Located in the west side of Glen City, Glen Center Drive, north of Glenview Drive, containing approximately 4.75 acres located in the east ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Again, is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Recipio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3575.
Thank you, sir. Second. Do I hear a second? A second, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Recipio. Item Z seven.
Item Z seven, public hearing on zoning petition of Graybrook Investments LLC from GOS Two-Face to GO-S. Property is located on the south side of Country Club Road, across from Quisenberry Road, located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in Councilchairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Monday.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I approve, I move for approval, rather, of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3576.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Go to item Z nine.
Item Z nine, public hearing on zoning petition of Vanguard Properties of Winston-Salem LLC and Ramey Development Corporation from RS9 and LI to RM18S. Properties located on the east side of Cole Road, north of US 311 and south of Interstate 40, containing approximately 55.95 acres located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in Councilchairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor members of the council, as you can see in the southeast ward, we've got apartments and townhomes popping up everywhere. I want to thank you for your investment in this community. It's leading to more people wanting to live, work, and relax in our neighborhoods, and it's because we've made the investments that are necessary. So with that being said, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3578.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z ten.
Item Z ten, public hearing on the ordinance amendment to the unified development ordinances to reflect current North Carolina general statute language regarding sight distance triangles, UDO CC 21.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, would you give us just a brief summary of what this proposed UDO text amendment would be?
Well, it's been a while since I've been up, so let me close all of these, all these other cases that I did not need. And I'll go to that presentation and just go to one slide I think that illustrates it best. Again, this is what is required by the statute. In the last session, the general statutes were changed to make it uniform how each community does sight triangles around the state, so it's not different going from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And the first image is how our ordinance currently says that we do sight triangles, which is we go to the edge of the right-of-way slash property line, which is the same line. You measure in 10 feet closest to the intersection and measure out 70 feet down the road in both directions, and that's your sight triangle easement. The image that's on the right of this is what the state statute now says is the way that has to be shown, which is you go from the edge of payment, come back 10 feet, go down the road 70. Again, this is a state statute requirement, and with this change, we will be consistent with what state law requires. And I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this proposed UDO text amendment? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? And the public court chairman had a motion ready.
No, I was supposed to read this.
I'm sorry.
I want you to go ahead.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, UDO CC 21.
Thank you. And that's second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z eleven.
Item Z eleven, adoption of a resolution of the Winston-Salem City Council opposing House Bill 470, Greensboro Winston-Salem Civil Service Board.
Councilmembers, I think we've all received the information on this from our staff and others, and I would entertain a motion.
Mayor members of the council, I move for approval of item Z eleven.
Second.
I have some comments before we vote.
Go ahead, Councilmember Monday.
I know we want to have a unanimous vote, to have a united front, but I have a real, before I can vote for this with a clear conscience, I know there are several officers from both police force and probably the fire department that wanted to comment tonight, and we didn't give the, we didn't have the opportunity for public comment tonight. But my concern is that if this does not pass, then we don't have anything in place to address their concerns about this grievance procedure that they have been bringing to our attention for at least two and a half years, because that's how long I've been in office. At this time that we are so concerned about recruiting and retaining police officers and firefighters, this is one of their biggest concerns that they've been bringing to us over and over. I think it's in the best interest of the city and of the citizens of Winston-Salem that we address this concern. So until I have some kind of commitment from our city management staff that I can't vote in favor of sending to the state legislature a document that says I don't want to pass the state legislature, because after that, there's no safety net for these folks.
City manager, I believe you're working on something. Would you like to comment on that?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Joines. Mayor Pro Tim Adams, member of the City Council.
Evening.
First little background on this, Councilmember Monday. I went back and looked at our grievances that have come to my office in the last five years. 22% of those grievances were overturned, 22%. So I take offense at saying the system isn't working at all by any means. I looked at some of the, the few that I know there were some significant concern from employees. They had representation at the hearings and we upheld the grievances. They were things like domestic violence, using racial slurs, things like that. I would defend every one of those grievances as being fair and impartial. In fact, the form of government that we have and the council manager form of government in 1920s, this form of government was created to take the politics out of personnel. That's why that authority lies with your manager and doesn't come to City Council. It lies with your professional manager to make those decisions. I've stood before employees during orientation sessions for years and told them that they have all of the protections of a grievance system. The joke I always tell is that the city attorney and I don't have those, but everybody else does, because they don't work directly for City Council. I don't think that there's a terrible problem with our current system, but we have identified some things that can be fixed, improved, not fixed, improved. The system has taken too long, the process takes too long. No employee should have to wait weeks and months before they find out, particularly if they've been suspended without pay. That's a real hardship. We've had a few of those cases where we reinstated individuals and had to, and we pay them back pay. But that, that's nice once you get it, but it's pretty hard to buy your, we don't have, don't have it, nor can you get unemployment while you're out waiting on a grievance. So we are going to institute a very strict rule. It's coming with budget. You'll see it in the personnel action that comes forward here in June on the timing. The timing is already in there, but we're going to institute a strict rule that will hold all of us accountable if we don't meet a much faster turnaround time for grievances. The other thing we're going to do in our, in our human resources directors here, and that will be in the budget as well with the personnel resolution, we're going to put in a, it's called a pre-disciplinary hearing. Most of our colleagues have that. Often, I would tell you, in most of the cases where we see, where our offices heard agreements and we've overturned it, if we'd had a pre-disciplinary hearing, it never would have gotten there. A pre-disciplinary hearing requires, a department, a department wants to take a disciplinary action against an individual, but before they can do it, they have to have this pre-disciplinary hearing with our human resources department. Employee gets a chance to show their, their position, their evidence, so does the department, and there's a consistent decision made upfront. I really think those two things will correct some of the, some of the concerns that some employees have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, no system is perfect, that it goes without being continuous improvement, corrective and preventive actions to correct them. Members of this council, I think most of you that have been with me for 14 years know that I am a supporter and a cheerleader of our employees and our staff, and I would go to bat with anybody that says I'm not. But the one thing that we have to understand is when we find an issue, we need to, we need to first decide if it's an issue. A lot of times, it's knee-jerk reaction. And from my world that I worked in for almost 40 years, you have to ask yourself why at least five times. Why is this happening? Why did it happen? What do we need to do to fix it? But you can't fix it by yourself, you have to fix it by listening to the people that the actions will affect or impact. I have an issue with this bill, and I've been around longer than a whole bunch of y'all have. I believe that we need to give the city an opportunity to stop, pause, and some of my peers have heard me say that a lot lately, press pause. Let's work on the issue. Let's fix the problem instead of everybody blaming everybody, everybody, we made mistakes. I'm not going to deny that. But give us a chance to fix it. I get more phone calls, I think, and emails and letters than any council member here, because everybody knows how I feel about what's right and was just. Whether it's the salary disparity studies I called for over 10 years ago, whether it's the pay increase to minimum wage I advocated for for 12 years, whether it's benefit rights for LGBTQ partners 12 years, and the list can go on and on and on, creating a safe environment for our employees and staff. Regardless of when a person brings a concern or issue, it is our responsibility to investigate it to the fullest. We are no different than the law. We are the law, basically. We are where the buck stops. So all I'm asking is, this bill, and after meeting with my peers from Greensboro while we were at the League of Municipalities City Visions this week in Concord, and other elected officials, this is a bad bill. And if you have not read the fine print, you need to do that. And I know that people are passionate on both sides, whether they're opponents or supportive. But right now, this is one of those bills that we need to stop. And I'm asking Councilmember Monday and the council to vote against this bill by sending this, showing our support in Raleigh against this bill. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Those didn't pass as unanimously. Thank you, councilmembers. We'll go now to item Z 12.
Item Z 12, Mayor Joines' recommendation for reappointment and appointments to the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership. Reappointment, categorical appointments, Mike Cashin, term expiring May 2026. Chad Cheek, term expiring May 2026. Rodney Davis, term expiring May 2026. Shannon Mayer, term expiring May 2026. And for appointment to the Downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, categorical appointment in retail, Umi Bengu, term ends May 2026. And categorical appointment for hotel, James William, also term ending May 2026.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Need a scorecard.
Funny.
And that is unanimous. Thank you, councilmembers. We do have a need to go into a closed session to discuss legal issue as well as a, another issue regarding a development project. And I believe, Councilmember Burke, do you have the motion for closed session?
I do.
Oh, Councilmember Clark has it there. Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
I haven't had a speaking part all night. I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with and provide instructions to the city legal staff regarding the settlement of a claim and other legal matters and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor of going to closed session, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed, no. We're going to ask to, we're going to stay in here, because we do have a video presentation we need to do, so I'll just ask anyone who not has business here to accuse themselves.
I was, hey, I was like.
Okay, I see myself. So we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Move for adjournment?
Thank you. All as a favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed note, we are adjourned.